Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council Committee on Contracts. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or in silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time during this hearing, do not approach today's. Thank you for your cooperation, Chair. We are ready to begin.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon. Good afternoon and welcome to this hearing of New York City Council's Committee on Contracts. Today is Wednesday 25th, 2023. My name is Julie Wong and I have the privilege of chairing this committee. I would like to thank the members of the committee for coming together to hold today's hearing. And I would also like to thank the Mayor's Office of Contract Services for joining us, as well as the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services for joining us. Today's hearing presents this committee with an opportunity to discuss two critical bills aimed at improving transparency, efficiency, and accountability in the city's procurement process. Intro 982, 2023, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brandon, would require interest rates rate payments, interest payments on late contracts with nonprofits to help offset the severe financial burden caused by chronic reimbursement delays. And Intro 1048, 2023, which I sponsored, would establish a centralized electronic document vault to consolidate and share procurement records across agencies. This aims to increase transparency and streamline contracting citywide. As we know, the city's contracting process is often delayed, opaque, and burdensome, especially for nonprofit human service providers that rely on these contracts for survival. Over three-quarters of city contracts were registered retroactively during the last fiscal year, resulting in late vendor payments stretching months past invoice dates, nonprofits routinely reporting reports relying on lines of credit and high-interest loans just to cover basic operation costs as they anxiously wait overdue reimbursements. The procurement process currently lacks clear timelines, milestones, and transparency around how contracts progress through the bloated multi-agency pipeline. Despite piecemeal city efforts, nonprofits continue to face hurdles like inadequate payment levels, overly burdensome administrative requirements, and limited visibility into what unfortunately remains a black box of contracting. Meanwhile, the nonprofit workforce providing essential services earns among the lowest wages in the city. High turnover exasperates the damage done by payment delays. Who bears the brunt of these delays? The most vulnerable New Yorkers, children, seniors, homeless New Yorkers, and more, who rely on nonprofits for food, housing, education, healthcare, and other fundamental services. When the city drags its feet on payments, the people who suffer are not faceless vendors, but rather the human faces of those the city's nonprofits serve. The two bills we are hearing today offer pragmatic solutions to begin easing these burdens on the nonprofits who continue to work for city residents. Interest payments would offset financial hardships from late contracts, and consolidating procurement records would streamline contracting and shine sunlight on the process. While these bills will not solve the problem entirely, they are important incremental steps on the long road of reform. I look forward to constructive feedback from the administration and advocates today to move us closer to a more transparent, efficient, and accountable procurement system. Before we turn things over to the administration, I would like to note that we have been joined by no councilmembers yet, but we don't want to waste time, so we want to get started, so that we're not, we're making sure that you can be on time as well and be respectful of everyone's schedules. Lastly, I would like to thank my committee staff, Senior Counsel Alex Polanoff, Policy Analyst Alex Yablon, Finance Unit Head Florentine Kabore, and Senior Financial Analyst Nia Hyatt for all their hard work putting this hearing together. I'll now turn over to our committee counsel to administer the oath.
Would all members of the administration testifying today please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth during your testimony today and to respond honestly to councilmember questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good afternoon, Chair Wong and committee members. My name is Kim Yu and I'm the First Deputy Director of the Mayor's Office of Contract Services, otherwise known as MOCS. Director Flores sends her apologies that she could not attend today's hearing due to family matters. But our office is more than willing to continue the conversation with you beyond this hearing. I'm joined by my colleagues to the right of me, Jacinda Markland, Chief Change Officer, and to the left of me, Matthew Sullivan, Deputy Chief of Staff, as well as our counterpart Diane Mamet, Deputy Director of Contracting at the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services. Thank you for inviting us today to discuss the bills introduced as part of this hearing. As we have shared, a top priority for our agency continues to be making the city a better business partner, particularly to the nonprofits who deliver the essential services that help sustain our city over the past few years. This work has been guided and informed by the recommendations from the Joint Task Force to Get Nonprofits Paid on Time and has yielded several major reforms over the past year and a half that we believe will make a lasting difference in how the city contracts with nonprofits. We shared out a long list of these achievements in a communication to the sector in August, but I would like to highlight a few major ones. First, last year, the Clear the Backlog Initiative resulted in clearing 4.2 in contract dollars of unregistered contracts and amendments over the course of a 12-week sprint. And we continued to clear most of the $7 billion by the end of 2022. For fiscal year 2024, 81% of human services contracts beginning July 1st were submitted to the Controller ahead of the new fiscal year, a near 25% increase from the prior year despite a major increase in contracting volume. As of this month, we have reached 99% submissions for this portfolio. In working with the city council, we found a major time savings through the implementation of multi-year base contracts for city, for city council discretionary awards, which allow repeat awards to access funding without going through the full procurement process each year. We estimate a nine-month reduction in cycle time for out-years awards after the first year of implementation. We've amended the standard human services contract to include language that would provide an allowance for increased funds beyond the contract maximum to a certain threshold. This alleviates the number of amendments that agencies and providers need to process, which will speed up cash flow. We also increased the threshold for financial control board reviews of MERRIL contracts. The threshold for FCB review on new contracts was increased to $50 million or more. We anticipate that this will remove weeks from administrative processing time for applicable contract actions. And there are many other accomplishments to date which we will have, which will have a tangible impact on our business process. We would be happy to set up a time to brief you, you and your staff more fully on this work we have led to overhaul the city's procurement process. Turning to the focus of today's hearing, MOCS generally supports the goals evident in the legislation: holding agencies accountable for timely payment to nonprofit organizations and using technology to make contracting more efficient. This spirit of accountability was a catalyst in the launch of our data transparency portal Passport Public, which provides unprecedented insight into the city's main procurement system through data analytics. Intro 982 would require interest to be paid on late payments under city contracts with nonprofit organizations. Our mission at MOCS is to facilitate on-time registration through every tool available to us: policy, process, and technology. In alignment with this effort and pursuant to PBB Rule 412, we provided summary data on the timeliness of agency contract submission in this year's annual indicators report. In it, we share that the citywide chief procurement officer has not deemed any agencies to be substantially late, but recognizes that there is still progress to be made. Similarly, the report also shares out data on the returnable grant fund, showing that over $100 million in loans were provided against nearly 200 applications in fiscal year 2023, a significantly lower number of applications than in most years past. This relatively low number of loan applications indicates that providers generally had a better experience with contracting in fiscal year 2023, corresponding to trends we see elsewhere in the data. The CPO's determination and the accompanying public reporting show that our new transparency tools are effectively holding us accountable for the ultimate goal of getting nonprofits paid on time. This work will continue on multiple fronts. And while we have made significant progress, we will be able to, we will be the first to tell you that there's more to do. While we support the general goals evident in Intro 982, we are seeing progress in the initiatives currently underway, and the administration cannot commit to any new legislation which would incur fiscal impact in the current budgetary environment. Intro 1048 would require the establishment of a document vault to store certain procurement-related documents, a feature of the HHS Accelerator System that MOCS is decommissioning in the coming year. We've heard widespread feedback from the sector that they wanted to replicate this feature in Passport, so we are actively working on the introduction of a new document vault in the coming year. We are happy to work with the Chair to review potential legislation on this effort, and we appreciate the council recognizing the importance of these passport enhancements. Thank you for hosting this hearing and thank you to the many nonprofit providers in attendance and watching the stream. We acknowledge the extraordinary work you've done for our city, especially over the past few years. And I hope I've shown today that the city is committed to making our contracting process work better for you. It will take us time for us to do this work, but it is absolutely, it is absolutely a priority. And I am proud of how much we have accomplished already. Along with my colleagues, I'm now happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. What is your perspective? You, you gave us a little bit in your testimony, but what is your perspective on the two bills before the committee today, Intro 982 and 1048? Does the administration support the goals and approach of these bills? And what concerns and suggestions do you have about implementation of, for each one?
Sure, Chair Wong, thank you. So if I may, I'll, I'll take them one at a time. So Intro, Intro 982 on interest. As stated in my testimony, we're seeing progress in our work to get nonprofit contracts registered in time, and we're expanding access to the loan fund for contracts that are submitted late. We believe these efforts meet the intention of the legislation, and in the current fiscal environment, the administration cannot commit to any new legislation which would increase costs. And the second bill, Intro 1048 on document vault. Our current roadmap for Passport includes the introduction of document vault to meet this need. As we fully transition procurement and financials activity into the system, we're happy to work with you, Chair, on this legislation.
For the Passport roadmap, I do remember us talking about that earlier on. What is that timeline for a document vault or some sort of that, some form of it to be implemented and public-facing for nonprofit service providers and vendors?
So, big picture, document vault is on track to be turned on spring of 2024. And I'm going to defer to my colleague here, who's sitting to the right of me, Jacinda Markland, about some more of the specifics.
Thank you, Chair Wong. Just so that you know that this will be available spring of 2024. We're currently in the process of transitioning and initiating the migration from Accelerator beginning in January of this year for health and human services agencies. And along with that process, we're also training both vendors, all of the nonprofit providers, and the city agencies that are supporting them in order to prepare for what's coming. So in spring of 2024, as my counterpart stated, we are fully on track. We are in the process of also conducting roadshows with the provider community so that they too are aware of what's coming and what the implications would be to their portfolios.
For the agencies that you're referring to, are all the agencies of the city government or do city government work that have city contracts? For example, like DOE, will they all be part of Document Vault as well for this version of Passport?
So all city agencies that are utilizing Passport will also have access to Document Vault. It was introduced because of the human services providers, but it will be accessible to all agencies.
Okay, so DOE will be part of the, part of this?
The contract, the contract portfolio that is currently in Passport will have access to Document Vault.
Okay, which means that it's not going to be all of DOE's contracts?
That is correct.
Are there any other agencies that will not be fully on Passport and Document Vault that human service providers should be aware of?
At this time, DOE is the only city agency that do not fully utilize contracts for human services contracting.
Okay. For Intro 982, when you were talking about how you current, you can't currently commit to the fiscal, due to the fiscal environment, does that mean that the mayor's administration is open in future fiscal environments?
So thank you for that follow-up, Chair Wong. I'll say that the administration inherent at MOCS were taking a slightly different approach to ensuring that nonprofit providers are paid on time, and we're using a host of tools. And so, which include, as I said, the, the technology tools to increase transparency, to drive accountability, and increased access to the loan fund. At this time, we're not taking the approach that we should be punishing the agencies in, in assessing late fees and interest payments.
Okay, so the answer is no, that it won't be considered at a later time? Okay. The Controller recently issued a report showing, uh, before I move on, are there any other concerns or suggestions that you have for either of the bills that you, you haven't already discussed?
Chair Wong, I think that there are just a few sort of like language edits on the margin, but in substance, we, we support the document vault legislation.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The Controller recently issued a report showing 75% of fiscal year 22 contracts were registered retroactively. What steps is the administration taking to increase on-time contract registration? And our fears are that as we continue to have the pegs, that as we are unable to backfill vacancies and we continue to have these cuts that will inevitably affect registration time, what is the plan that MOCS has to combat what may even become slower of a registration rate?
So Chair Wong, as I stated in my testimony, in the past year, the administration has made great strides in leading the joint task force work that we've, we've undertaken with the Controller's Office. Some of the key wins include city council discretionary contract reform, so thank you very much for your partnership in that. The introduction of the allowance clause into the human service standard contract. The returnable grant fund, we're working on streamlining the application process, and we'll have expanded communication to the sector on the availability of funds. And also, as I mentioned in the testimony, the financial board raising the threshold so that more contracts move quicker. And we've, we've launched the vendor integrity unit in line with the recommendations of the task force report. We've also launched the vendor compliance cabinet. We're doing work on the citywide audit reform. Both MOCS and the Mayor's Office of Risk Management and Compliance are partnering, partnering to create a single audit for New York City to reduce the duplication for providers and centralizing financial performance data for risk management. So we're using a whole, we're looking at it comprehensively, and we're introducing a lot of tools to tackle this issue. And I want to give a little bit of space for, for the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services to, to speak also here, Chair Wong.
Thank you, thank you, Chair Wong. So, the Mayor's Office for Nonprofit Services, it continues to be committed to advancing the work as outlined in the task force memo. Recently, we've onboarded two key staff members late this summer for a total of five staff, including Executive Director Ford. So as of October 30th, we will have five staff onboard. In addition to the ongoing procurement reform and capacity building development, our office serves as an ombudsman's office for the nonprofit sector, so we continue to advocate for nonprofits intervening with city agencies on an as-needed basis to resolve contracting and payment issues. So we continue to support the nonprofits in their work and to lend a hand where needed as necessary.
Could I just jump in?
Yeah.
To add one more thing, that as First Deputy mentioned, for FY '24 timeliness, we, we did hit 81% on-time submissions for this current fiscal year. So those are the contracts starting on July 1 for the current fiscal year. So we, we certainly expect our retroactivity numbers to be significantly improved in this current coming year that, after having improved by 25% on timeliness for July 1, but also as the Deputy Director mentioned, just making this data transparent and publicly available. Our indicators report is, has a lot more data than in prior years. Passport Public is available now, so we do think that just having an open conversation, having the data be out there, and holding ourselves accountable to it has already really shown dividends.
Thank you. Can you explain the root causes of why 75% of fiscal year 20, 22 contracts were registered retroactively despite all these efforts that have taken place this year?
I think, so as Director Flores has mentioned previously, really when we undertook the joint task force work, we see the procurement process has built up layers and layers of policy and regulation over decades since the 1980s. And whenever a new thing is added, we don't often think, is the old thing also still required? Or redundant or potentially duplicative in terms of the policy and process infrastructure around procurement? So, and going digital with Passport enables us to, to really look at all that stuff and say, what do we still really need? So some of these big reforms, like multi-year discretionary, the allowance clause, and then on the capital side, I know it's not the topic of today's hearing, but we've had some, some big wins there, like repealing EO 102, that really cut down on months of process time. And we're, that's the work that we're still doing for the rest of this year into next, as well as all the work that Chief Change Officer Markland is leading to digitize procurement.
Do you know what the comparison is with fiscal year 21 or 20 for fiscal year 22 of the percentage that were signed retroactively?
I don't think I, we have that available right here, but we can certainly follow up with that.
Yeah, I would love to compare the data of seeing how much progress that we're making, even if it's 5%. I know that 75% retroactive doesn't sound good, but maybe before then it was 90% or 150%. So I would love to see the trend that we have.
Yes, Chair Wong, I'm just jumping in here. I know we're talking about FY '22. Just also want to make clear that FY '22 was from the previous administration. We have made serious strides. So for FY '23, we've made a 23, a 25% increase in terms of timeliness registration. So for FY '24, we were at 81%. Right now, we're currently at 99%. For FY '23, we were in, we were at 60, I don't want to misquote, but we, it was a 25% difference increase. So we have been steadily making strides to improve.
Okay, that's great. We would love all that data so that we can share with our nonprofit partners. Then for a follow-up question, can you provide more details on the vendor compliance cabinet? How is compliance data being shared across agencies now?
Chair Wong, big picture, the, the vendor compliance cabinet is something that the administration has kicked off and is a work in progress. We really wanted to focus on the, the subject matter of these two bills that are being introduced, so I'll have to get back to you some more specifics on the vendor compliance cabinet and also have the team that's leading that work available to you.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Nonprofits report that even when contracts are registered, reimbursement rates often only cover 80 cents on the dollar for programming costs. How is the administration addressing the issue of underfunded nonprofit contracts?
Thank you, Chair Wong. For this one, again, I'll, I'll defer to the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Wong. So the administration is committed to investing in our nonprofit partners. We've implemented several key initiatives to address this issue. Through the indirect cost rate funding initiative, the city acknowledges and pays for critical indirect costs in human service contracts. This means that nonprofits are being paid for their actual indirect operational expenses. The option for recertification after the initial three-year effective date remains available and ongoing, so this is an ongoing commitment. Additionally, an established indirect rate can be used in RFP proposals. Another initiative that addresses the issue was the Workforce Enhancement Initiative. The FY '24 adopted budget included $40 million in FY '24 and increases to $90 million in FY '25 in new funding in human service contracts. This is in addition to the $68 million Workforce Enhancement Initiative that was baselined in last year's budget. Funding was made available for this initiative through the new allowance clause, which amended the standard human services contract to include language that provides an allowance for increased funds beyond the contract minimum, excuse me, maximum to a certain threshold. So we continue to make investments in the sector.
I'm sorry, Chair Wong, you cut off at the end. I'm so sorry.
Which recommendations does the administration see as the highest priority for the ones that have not been implemented yet for the, for the next fiscal, I mean, for the rest of the fiscal year and the next year to come in 2024? And what currently has been completed and implemented from the Joint Task Force?
Sure. For this one, I'm actually going to turn it over to Matt, just to get us started.
Yeah, I think First Deputy Director Yu listed off a lot of the, the big ones that we would like to highlight, particularly multi-year discretionary in partnership with the council, which really saves months of time for council discretionary awards, and then the allowance clause, which will reduce amendment volume going forward. Looking forward, the, the big things, I think, really some of the passport enhancements that our Chief Change Officer has spoken to is a, is a big one that we see coming up in the future, as well as launching contracts that. And we, I don't think we have the, the full list of every single recommendation in front of us, but happy to look at that and send kind of a status update later.
Any, anything else you want to add? Okay.
No, I think that takes care of it. Thank you, Chair Wong.
Thank you. Has the administration established specific timelines and deadlines for each stage of the procurement process as recommended by the task force?
Thank you, Chair Wong. This, this issue has come up time, from time to time. So while the administration agrees with timeframes, that they're useful performance management tool for contracting agencies, the administration in MOCS, we just want to make sure that the timeframes are supported by data and they reflect realistic benchmarks. So this work continues to be underway.
Do you have an estimate of how much longer you'll be collecting data to establish the timeframes that the task force has recommended for themselves?
So I'll say that it's going back to the sort of like comprehensive overall approach and like really using the technology tools to drive the conversation. I think one of the things that we are looking forward to this fall, winter, and then also spring, is really having those conversations and using those technology tools.
How many years has Passport been implemented now, total?
So, high level, I will say, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean on my colleagues also. Passport has, has gone through many iterations and we're going to be in our fifth release this fall. I want to say Passport Release 1 was certainly the prior administration and maybe eight years now.
Okay, so that means that we have eight years of data digitally in addition to data that may be on paper from the history of time of New York City government. Is that not enough data to establish timelines, timelines now?
It's a good question, Chair Wong. And so within each phase of the releases on Passport, there's been an incremental, there have been chunks of the overall procurement process moved into Passport. So it wasn't as though Passport Year 1 in 2017, 2018, that all the data was there. It's just really, I will say, since Director Flores took, took the leadership role at, at MOCS, that we've really honed in on like focusing on the data, developing the data tools, and having the conversation around the data. And the administration has also doubled down on the And the administration has also doubled down on this with the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, but also allowed.
Hi, Chair Juan. I just wanted to jump in here. For the most part, ContractStat is the tool that we know we're developing it to be the powerful tool so that we can be much more surgical and utilize the data in a way that is meaningful to be able to adhere it to these timeframes. Understanding that with the data, though Passport was launched in August of twenty seventeen, the level of data that we're gathering now, it's not the same. It's a mismatch of data. So in under Director Flores's guidance, we've established new tools, new processes, new systems to be better able to tell the story, to understand what should inform the timeframes that we want to be we would like to adhere to based on what the Joint Task Force has recommended.
Okay, got it. So what you're telling me is that even though Passport was first launched eight years ago, but it wasn't until twenty seventeen, fall or winter, when it was fully operational, covering all of the needs that the city has?
So I can help. So sourcing to registration went live in in a soft launch twenty twenty, really has not been fully so basically about two two to three years of full-scale use for sourcing to registration, which is really the data that is going to inform the sort of timeframes you're talking about of how long does it take for an agency to complete the sourcing phase? How long does it take to for vendors to respond? And how do we, what are the comparison? What are the industry differences? What are the contract value differences? So going through kind of all that stuff and how we define those milestones and then how we extract the data from the system. It is a lot of work. We we've gotten we've gotten to a good place with a kind of reporting tools that will eventually feed into ContractStat to have an informed conversation about those timeframes. But we there's still much more work, and then we have new functionality rolling out over the course of the year. So, you know, it's it's tied to what is being used at that time and how long it's been used. And then how can we develop the reporting tools to to really have reliable data that informs this conversation?
So do you have a benchmark for MOCs of when you believe it will be enough of an aggregated data set that you could say safely that you can move forward? Is that five years for you? Is it ten years from you?
Well, I think we we're at a place where we're ready to roll out ContractStat in the coming months. So that's kind of the starting point, and then we'll keep iterating from there.
I want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Councilmember Joanne Areola. With the current announcement of the fifteen percent pegs, how does this affect the timeline for Passport and Council Stat rollout? If any, for the costs associated with it, along with the consultants and other vendor costs?
So you cut off a little bit at the end, Chair Juan, but I will I'll I I'll start. If if my reply is not fulsome enough, please. So I'll say on behalf of the administration and then also reiterate what the mayor has said very publicly. We are in a fiscal crisis. And so every single agency, as you know, has been asked to take a peg, and there will be more pegs. And how that impacts our day-to-day work, including Passport, that's still developing. So that is really where we are. I think there are more there are going to be more details to come, and this is going to develop, but it is not everybody's going to be impacted, us included and the nonprofit community also.
I know that every single agency is doing their peg exercises for the November plan, which is just around the corner. So do you have pegs or costs for Passport and Council Stat included in your exercise?
Sorry, what was the last part, Chair Juan?
Do you have, do you expect that the cost for Passport as well as Council Stat, including all the vendor costs for consultants, et cetera, will be included in your peg exercise for this November?
So those conversations are happening right now. So we have tried very much to to protect our core work, which is Passport. So we've tried to trim away things so that we aren't impacting our core operations. So but only time will tell. We are having those conversations right now.
Okay, thank you. What is the status of developing a performance management system for procurement, including key indicators and benchmarks to track and reduce cycle times?
Sure, Chair Juan. So transparency and accountability are core values as part of the administration at MOCs. We've developed a performance dashboard that my that my my colleague here, Chief Change Officer Markland, spoke about ContractStat that'll provide real-time KPIs, key performance indicators. We're currently working with the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services to to prepare for the rollout before the holidays.
Okay, so by the holidays in December? Okay, great. Has the administration explored expanding access to bridge loans through the returnable grant fund to help provide cash flow for nonprofits awaiting contract registration?
So Chair Juan, I just want to restate the question just so that I I'm I'm being responsive to you. I think you're asking me about the returnable grant fund. Is that right?
I'll just read it again. Has the administration explored expanding access to bridge loans through returnable grant fund to help provide cash flow for nonprofits awaiting contract registration?
Yes. Okay. So here at MOCs, we've been working to modernize and simplify the returnable grant fund application to make it more accessible to nonprofits. We'll be rolling out a new simplified application along with updated guidance this year, this calendar year. Additionally, we've enhanced communications around the loan fund's availability to encourage its use and for the first time, reported out on loan fund metrics in this year's indicators report that's available on the MOCs website. The report shows that we loaned out over a hundred million dollars in the last fiscal year, the highest in four years.
Okay, great. So that means that it will be out by December twenty twenty-three?
The the modernized application, yes.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you. Does the administration support the concept of a centralized document vault, which you already said you do, consolidate procurement process across the agencies? And then do you have any potential concerns or has potential concerns been raised at all with housing-sensitive contact information and such a repository for privacy purposes?
So so that's a good question, and thank you for that. So here, the administration and MOCs take data privacy very seriously. As we've developed Passport's document vault, we've always maintained an eye towards information security. In the Passport document vault, providers will specify which agencies can view which documents. And so this will help protect sensitive data.
Got it. Thank you. How does the administration respond to calls for greater transparency in publishing real-time contract status updates instead of high-level spending data? And what additional procurement data could be made publicly available, and maybe that's going to be part of Council Stat?
So in addition to ContractStat, I want to highlight Passport Public. Last year, we released it with even more transparency on city contracts and data to the public. We're continuing to iterate on Passport Public functionality and reports. We're happy to hear feedback from the council or members of the public on how to use the tool and how it could be more useful to those who seek the information. Additionally, we've introduced new metrics to our annual indicators report, released a few weeks ago, as I plugged earlier, also available on our website, which bring additional transparency to the city procurement process.
Thank you. Could you remind me again when ContractStat will be publicly available for nonprofits? Or is that has that already been released?
No, it hasn't been. And for that, I will turn it over to the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services to talk a little bit more about ContractStat.
Thank you, Chair Juan. So ContractStat is a data product that'll inform routine accountability meetings with internal stakeholders. So the initial version was previewed for key internal stakeholders with, as MOCs had stated, full functionality planning to be rolled out by the holidays. So initially, it is intended to be internal, but it will inform out after. And we do have plans down the road to make this available as well to the nonprofits.
Got it. Thank you. Just to go back for document vault privacy just for a second. You said that document vault providers can select which agencies can view their documents. Could you expand on that a little bit? Can providers or nonprofit service nonprofit service providers or vendors update the agency as they submit new information? Or does that have to be indicated on the offset on the onset? Is there going to be flexibility on who you can share with at a given time?
So for this, Chair Juan, I will again turn it over to Chief Change Officer Markland to talk a little bit about the the technical components and aspects.
Thank you, Chair Juan. Thank you for the question. Yeah, so what it is is that the way in which document vault would work is that providers have the opportunity, once they're uploading a document, to identify specific agencies, but they would have the ability to make changes to that throughout the process while they're contracting. There are certain contracting documents that go across multiple agencies that are relevant, and they would have the ability to make those changes throughout the process. So if they were to do it one time, it doesn't mean that they're locked in to how those things, how those documents were distributed.
Got it. Thank you. What steps can the administration take to further simplify and streamline burdensome administrative requirements on vendors, particularly nonprofit service providers?
So thank you, Chair Juan. For this one, I'll turn it over to Matthew Sullivan again.
Yeah, I think this goes to the earlier point about kind of continuing to review layers of rules and regulations and internal policies, laws for any opportunity to to streamline the process. And I I can tell you, we that we're doing that every single day as part of Passport work and the the task force ongoing work.
For the policies that you're referring to, are they, would that have to be legislated to amend the existing law? Or is it internal policies that can be changed internally?
It's a combination of both.
Okay. So for external policies that have to be legislated, please let us know so we can legislate them away.
Happy to work with you.
Does the administration have concerns with mandating interest payments on late nonprofit contracts? If so, how can we improve timeliness while avoiding penalizing agencies?
So thank you, Chair Juan. I'll sort of take that in parts, if if I may, and I will refer a little bit back to the testimony also. So again, the work we do every day gets to the goal of paying nonprofits on time. We believe our current work through rule reform, technological enhancements, and more gets to the same goal. And we're also expanding access to the loan fund, as I mentioned before, in the case of contracts that are submitted late. We believe we're seeing progress. Again, I mentioned that this in the testimony. The CPO determined no agency was substantially late in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And our performance in fiscal year twenty twenty-four timeliness, eighty-one percent on-time submissions that Chief Change Officer Markland spoke about, shows a positive trend. But again, I will go back to because it does introduce a fiscal requirement. We're just unable to commit to it at the time due to the budgetary environment.
Yeah, it's just hard because as the nonprofits are suffering financially for them, and they're also under the same fiscal environment because they're reliant on us to pay them on time. It's hard because there's no enforcement mechanism or any sort of accountability for these agencies that are continuing to be delinquent in their payments or in registrations for these nonprofits. So if it isn't going to be mandating an interest payment for for late nonprofit contracts, we have to find another way where we're keeping agencies accountable because I don't know how many more times I could go back and forth with Director Ford. And we're both frustrated at the amount of money and the amount of nonprofits are continuing to struggle saying that we will have to close our doors or we will have to lay off X number of people because we just don't have the money on time. So I hope to continue to have these conversations with you. Does the administration commit to fully fund, commit to fully fund indirect cost rates for human service providers? And what is the timeline for implementing this?
So for this one, Chair Juan, I'll defer to the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, if I may.
Thank you, Chair Juan. So yes, there is a commitment to fully fund indirect rate costs through the indirect cost rate initiative, right? Providers, nonprofits apply through the process, and once they have an established indirect rate, it is funded and reimbursed at that rate. Rates are good for three years and are applied across all contracts.
Okay. What is preventing the city from establishing a transparent, public-facing portal that vendors can track real-time status of their own contracts through the process? You talked about this already, how you're working on it. When do you think that will be available to the public?
So Chair Juan, there is there is some there are some tools that are already available. Spoke about Passport Public earlier. It does bring a lot more transparency on city contracts and provides data to the public, including information on where a contract is in the procurement process. For current vendors, Passport offers lots of detailed information on the real-time status of their contracts to help vendors track the progress.
So what do you think the problem is? Because even this past week, I've had nonprofits who did not know that they had to submit like X number of paperwork by a date, and they'd missed that deadline, and now they're doing it. Why do you think that there's still a gap in understanding what the status is, why they're not being paid on time? What what is causing the delay? Were they still are unaware until Director Ford gets involved and tells them it's because you're missing XYZ contract documents?
Thank you, Chair Juan. So a part of that specifically for the nonprofit providers is why we are also migrating from Accelerator to Passport, which would afford them more visibility in understanding where their payments are and what process is being held up at. So that's one of the main impetus in order to bring visibility and transparency to those providers. It's would be resulting in them being in Passport. So by the spring of next year, they would have much more visibility. It doesn't address the gap in in lack of communication, and we can continue to work with agency partners to make sure and with our other colleagues, with bonds, to make sure that they're getting the correct information at the appropriate times to be able to move things through.
Is there any way that we can automate those messages? Because if we, because I remember when we reviewed the current Passport system, and it wasn't exactly a pizza tracker, but there is some sort of timeline where you can track where the individual is in that status. So if someone is caught up and they are don't have the digital awareness to find where they are for themselves, is there any way in the system where we could have an automated ticket or an automated message that goes out to the nonprofit service provider saying, you did not complete XYZ form? And therefore, you're like, it's not going to be moving forward until you submit them? Instead of having a human being, especially in this fiscal environment where everyone is working with less people, to notify all these nonprofits who are waiting, and they're just sitting in the dark and have no idea what they're what they're supposed to do?
So Chair Juan, that is a question that we will actually take back just because we know the functionality that we are building into the system. But the level of automation for the different steps, I want to make have a deeper conversation with our Chief Technology Officer to see what's immediately planned, and those are suggestions that we will continue to have conversations with if it's not.
And could I also jump here? And I think so part of what you may be hearing as well are the city council discretionary awards, which is is a different process than the normal normal competitive process for city agencies in that there's kind of this checklist of tasks that happen before the award gets uploaded to Passport. So clearance by council, they have to complete a capacity building trading. We we tell them, we are very communicative of what the requirements are, but I think it's not always the clearest for providers, especially the kind of very small nonprofits who are getting small awards. So again, we are we're really happy about the multi-year reform, but we do think there's room for further reform in this area. And happy, again, happy to work with you as always to kind of demystify the process a little bit more.
I definitely hear you on the council council blackbath process, but that's not what I'm referring to because the ones that I work directly with your team and Director Ford on are for millions of dollars for contracts with D Y C D and primarily MOCJ that has been transferred to D Y C D and other agencies, sometimes D C L A, D F T A, that are for a very large sum of money that has been caught up in the system for more than three years now. So it's for a larger sum of money that people are fighting for.
Yeah, I think there's there's room across the board for more transparency. So defer to.
Because the council discretionary amount, like you said, it's such a small percentage of the contracts that were that the nonprofit service providers reach out for in comparison to the larger contracts that they're getting directly from the city.
Yeah, I think we get these questions all the time from, from kind of both groups as well. So, and helping to demystify the process is, is a core goal of what we're doing.
Did you want to add something else? The, the only thing I would add, uh, Chair, and thank you. Uh, we're, I think, you know, you know, all across, you know, this table here, I think we are just committed to making sure that we increase communication and transparency to those who provide the services to the city. And we do that in a variety of ways, technology being one of them. And then we certainly take back the automatic alerts. But then also, we've sort of gone back to basics and like, it just really is having somebody to be responsive on a phone call. And like, we are doing in-person trainings and we're also doing webinars. So there's a whole slew of tools that we're trying to use to really get at the, what you're flagging here.
Yeah, cause I don't know how we would fix it. But even for, for example, for childcare providers, we have a childcare provider that is continuing to provide three K and four K as well as, um, childcare for infants in their, in their facility, yet they have not been paid since 2020. So it's a huge problem that we're seeing across the board, and we want to make sure that it's resolved. And a lot of these, when we follow up, Director Ford usually tells us like, it's, they're just missing this one document. And we're like, oh, wow. I wish we, and then the people are frustrated and they're like, oh, if we knew three years ago, then we would have gotten paid by now. So we just hope that there's some sort of way we, where we are either automating the alert to tell them that they are missing a document, or we have some sort of team, I guess, that has to do all these calls, like a hotline every single day because it's going to be massive. So I don't know how we manage it. But my next question is, um, the, the procurement process lacks enforceable deadlines and accountability mechanisms. What is the administration doing to strengthen that oversight and compliance with timelines, especially when a timeline does not exist?
So, um, yes, uh, so as mentioned earlier, um, you know, we share and agree and are aligned on the goal of setting timeframes for stages of the procurement process. We, we really want to have the conversation with the data backing to make sure that, uh, the timeframes that we set are appropriate. Um, and as, as mentioned, with ContractStat, um, rolling forward in, um, the fall and winter and, and even beyond into spring and with Passport Public, those conversations are well underway.
For Passport Public and ContractStat, when you have the Document Vault built in for Passport, it's supposed to be within Passport, right? For Document Vault, would that help with a lot of these missing documents? Or would it still continue to be issues for folks?
Thank you, Chair Wong. I think a part of it that will help to mitigate some of those concerns because they all have one place, one repository, and not be juggling two separate systems. So I think that was also, um, contributing specifically to human services providers was they're managing in both Passport and Accelerator. Now moving to the one system with Document Vault, they'll have greater access and ease. We're also updating the user interface for Passport. Um, again, hoping to make sure that it's more easier to navigate. Um, the ongoing communications, the ongoing roadshows. We have several initiatives at M O Cs in which we meet the vendors where they're at so that we can kind of bring that information to them. A big portion of why Director Flores wanted us to host the roadshows was to make sure that we were getting directly to the providers and not just relying on agency partners who were working extremely hard to shepherd the message. But we too want to be supportive in that way to make sure that they're getting the information and that it's readily accessible.
Is the, are the roadshows the same as M O Cs in your district or like in your neighborhood? Or are those two separate things?
Those are two separate initiatives. So the Passport roadshows are specifically targeting the human services providers to let them know what's coming down the pipeline in terms of the changes migrating from Accelerator to Passport and making, giving them the opportunity to ask questions and to learn upfront and firsthand what levels of supports are available.
That's great. Are the roadshows happening in every borough or?
For the most part, um, most of them have been digital. So they're virtual, so we're doing virtual, hybrid, and in-person. It's dependent on the strategic partners, um, and the preference of the providers. We're making ourselves accessible to them.
Okay, I would love to host one in my district. It could be virtual or in-person or hybrid because we consistently get requests from pretty much every single nonprofit I, I work, that I have in my district. From Sunnyside Community Services, they have outstanding payments. We have outstanding payments for community capacity development, for resettlement houses. Pretty much every single nonprofit, um, the L I C Shabod, the, that's the daycare center, as well as others. Um, we also had Little Friends. We have so many in the district who are struggling to get payments on time. So we would love to do, help you host lab. I could help you find a space. I could help you promote it, whatever it is. So I would love to work with your team on that.
Thank you so much, Chair Wong, for your generosity. We will definitely take you up on that.
Yeah, it would save, I think, Director Ford a lot of time because we email her very often trying to help our team. Um, would the administration support provisions allowing M O Cs impose penalties on agencies? Well, you already said no because of the fiscal environment. What is the administration's plan to clear the current backlog of pending or stalled contracts awaiting registration? What can council and providers do to assist in this effort? All volunteer our time and weekends and evenings.
Yeah, I think, um, this is, this is really the, the timeliness initiative that we talked about with F Y twenty-four, project managing agencies every step of the way. You should have X vendor documents submitted by X date, X financials completed by X date. And I, I can tell you that Director Flores has, is, um, uh, extremely rigorous with this of calling vendors individually herself to make sure that vendors are completing their documents so that the agencies aren't held up as well uh, for the purpose of, uh, getting the, the contracts to registration. So I think we're happy to, to, um, let you know folks are, are behind and, uh, get your support as well.
Okay.
Chair Wong, I just wanted to jump in because as of today, we are at ninety-nine percent, which means there's only one percent. It's, and one percent is impactful for those providers who, who's not registered. However, we are at ninety-one percent today, and we're still actively working with those agency partners and providers to get to a hundred percent.
Thank you. That is great news. And I just want to acknowledge we've been joined by Councilmember Sandy Nurse. Uh, my last question for you today is, does the administration commit to engaging nonprofit partners, nonprofits as partners in designing any new technology tools aimed at improving procurement processes? I know that we've spoken earlier, and I remember, um, Director Flores also sharing how there have been focus groups or feedback loops with certain nonprofit providers. So if you could just expand on that, especially for councils, um, not for contracts that, as well as for the Document Vault, the new version of Passport Public, Passport Public. If you could just expand on how you're including their feedback because they want to feel that they have a voice in this process as you release these new great tools?
So thank you, Chair Wong. I think Document Vault is a prime example of M O Cs listening to the human services sector and, um, really taking in the feedback that the legacy system, H H S Accelerator, which is going to be decommissioned at the end of the year, one of its beloved features was the Document Vault. Um, and the administration and M O Cs' um, uh, uh, commitment of resources and time and effort to make sure that Document Vault is also part of Passport. Um, as we continue the rollout of, um, financials and vendors being able to submit their invoices into Passport and agencies being able to pay those invoices, that is, that is like, that is illustrative of how we take, um, the sector's feedback as we develop the technology tools.
Sounds good. If there's a nonprofit provider that wants to volunteer their time to participate in giving feedback, how could they get involved?
Please connect them to us, but, um, I'll also turn it over to, to Chief Change Officer Markland.
Thank you, Chair Wong. That is a great, um, suggestion. Um, we, we do it throughout periodically. So the change office actually, um, we can share the contact information in which they could reach out to us. But also note that a lot of the enhancement requests that we receive from Passport come directly from the provider community. So there are several enhancements that were initiated by them contacting our service desk team, which is our help desk or our support for all users, all vendors and providers of Passport. And many of our enhancements to date have also come, have been prompted by issues, concerns, or recommendations from the sector.
Great. Thank you so much. So we're gonna now move to public testimony. Thank you so much for coming and providing your feedback. And we look forward to continuing to partner with you on these new improvements. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Wong.
Thank you. We'll now turn to public testimony. Each panelist will be given three minutes to speak. For panelists testifying in person, please come to the dais as your name is called and wait for your turn to speak. For panelists who are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. The first in-person panel today will be Kendi Rainwater, Shelby Lorre, Mary Fulham, and Frank Carucci. Please come to the dais if your name has been called. And if you are here in which to testify in person and did not hear your name called, please fill out a witness slip and hand it to the sergeants. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for being here. And then we can start to listen to your public testimonies, whoever wants to start.
Delays in contract registration create cash flow challenges that delay or preclude us not only from hiring staff, but also from purchasing critical services and paying rent and other vendors, which in return result in late fees, higher vendor prices, and disqualifying us from lines of credit. When the city forces us to front costs before a contract is registered, the provider makes what is in effect a interest-free loan to the city, and this must be fixed. Once the contracts are registered and we begin invoicing for payment, the invoicing process itself is extremely onerous and inflexible. But perhaps the most painful part of this process is when the city fails to pay us on time and we therefore can't spend all the funds within a single year. The city then keeps whatever we do not spend, effectively cutting our funding and reducing the services we can provide. Ensuring timely contract registration and payment is critical for organizations like ours to function. We would like to thank Chairperson Wong and Councilmembers Brandon, Jaeger, Hanif, and Brewer for their time and dedication to this issue and advocacy on behalf of providers like us in the communities we serve. The reforms that are needed are significant in interest on late payments, together with other changes such as increasing contract advances to fifty percent are essential for us to continue. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wong and members of the Committee on Contracts for the opportunity to testify. My name is Shelby Lorre, and I'm here on behalf of the Daycare Council of New York. The Daycare Council of New York is a membership organization of early childhood provider organizations in New York City. D C C N Y supports its member organizations and New York's early childhood field at large through policy research and advocacy, labor relations and mediation, professional development, and training for early childhood education, directors and staff, and referral services for parents looking to find childcare. D C C N Y member organizations provide early care and education at over two hundred sites in neighborhoods all across the five boroughs. Most D C C N Y member organizations work with contracts with the New York City Public Schools. D C C N Y member organizations also provide early childhood education through privately funded programs in the Federal Office of Head Start. D C C N Y member organizations operate in off-air boroughs and employ over four thousand New Yorkers. Late payments continue to put New York City's early childhood education providers at risk of closure and in a state of crisis. D C C N Y visited dozens of provider sites over the summer, and we surveyed over two hundred and fifty early care and education providers. Of those providers, sixty-four percent remained unpaid for previous month's services. That is, the majority of early care providers had to rely on personal loans and business loans to cover this payment gap. In interviews with D C C N Y member organizations, we heard time and again that late payments added significant financial strain, particularly because providers must bear the brunt of late fees and interest incurred for the months awaiting N Y C P S payments. Of the centers that had to bridge payment gaps, twenty-five percent obtained a business loan, twenty-six percent took out a personal loan, and other options providers sometimes took to help with costs included external grants and private funds. When these loans cover an entire payroll, the interest for even a single month creates a crippling financial burden, especially for the already resource-limited early care providers. Unfortunately, issues with late payments remain a core challenge to the operation of early childhood education facilities. This has been demonstrated through surveys and research time and again. In October twenty twenty-two, D C C N Y conducted a survey of a hundred and fifty-nine centers and family care child networks operating through fiscal year twenty twenty-two contracts. The survey uncovered that twenty-nine percent of respondents had at least one unregistered contract. Only thirteen percent of respondents were able to submit an invoice through Pre-Kids vendor portal. And forty-one percent of respondents missed payroll or delayed vendor payments due to delayed payments from the Department of Education. There were also some research from C Change on showing that there was a cumulative cash flow deficit of four hundred and sixty-four million dollars in city contracts when comparing the funds approved to invest in early childhood education and the funds received by providers. And nineteen organizations had a deficit of five million dollars or more. This crisis is causing missed payroll, forcing early childhood education committed staff and staff members to look for new jobs or to struggle to make ends meet, missed payments to vendors, missed payments for employee benefits. And it's generally something that needs some attention. And Daycare Council of New York really appreciates the city council's work to ensure that childcare providers are paid on time. On-time payment is crucial for the stability of New York's childcare providers. So thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and we're happy to answer any questions at the email address on the page. Thank you.
Hi. Uh, my name is Mary Fulham. I am the Managing Director of La Mama Experimental Theater Club. Uh, this, this theater organization was founded in nineteen sixty-one by Ellen Stewart. And for the past sixty-two years, La Mama has been supporting artists and the creation of new work. We have been very fortunate to have our work recognized and valued by the city council, Borough President, as well as previous and current mayoral administrations in the form of financial support for the renovation of our landmark building at seventy-four A East Fourth Street. The total cost of this multi-year project was twenty-four million. And La Mama gratefully acknowledges the generous budget allocations from D C L A, the Borough President, and the New York City Council to support it. With your support and our community, we managed to raise twenty-two million for this project. This was a Herculean task, as was actually the management of the project. Because of the enormous cost of the renovation, the project was divided into two phases. We were very fortunate to secure bridge financing from L I S C to manage the time lag in reimbursements from the city. While the necessity of bridge loans, we understand, and the management of the city's capital process is not unusual, the city taking two years, the city took two years to approve our Phase Two funding agreement. The delays in these approvals and in reimbursements for Phase Two of our project allowed construction and financing costs to skyrocket during and post-COVID, which saddled La Mama with much greater which saddled La Mama with much greater debt than we had ever anticipated, anticipated or planned for, further exacerbating the situation where the delayed payments for also Phase Two requisitions. So, you know, due to these delays, we now find ourselves in a dire financial position with a debt of over $3 million. And monthly debt payments will soon reach 60,000 per month. La Mama is a $3 million organization. So an organization of our size will not be able to sustain a debt payment like this and continue to be able to operate. We are in desperate need of financial support due to this debt. The irony, of course, is that the city's support for La Mama may very well have put La Mama's future in jeopardy, especially at this moment when art and artists can and must play a crucial role in bringing communities together. Had legislations such as Intro 982 been in existence to promote, to promote expedited payments to nonprofits, we don't think we would be in this situation. Therefore, we wholeheartedly thank this committee and support Intro 982 and any other reforms to the city's procurement and reimbursement processes that can be made in the future. Thank you so much.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Frank Carucci. I'm on the Board of Directors of La Mama Experimental Theater Club. And I'm very glad I have this opportunity to talk with you today. Mary has, I think, covered so much of the material I was going to say. But as I just wanted to tell you, that I was at the opening of that building when La Mama did its first performance approximately 55 years ago. And we have continued working, it's now 62 years, with people around the world. So we are a multicultural organization that seeks out and gives opportunities to groups that might not be able to perform anywhere else until they get some basic recognition. Our, in our case, we were the beneficiaries, as Mary said, of a very generous capital contribution from the city council, Manhattan Borough President's office, the Department of Cultural Affairs for restoration of our building on 74 East Fourth Street. The renovation of our landmark building was a tremendous undertaking done in two phases over the years. But when we first got that building at 74, Ellen was given the opportunity to buy it by the Ford Foundation that provided her with the money. And it was a big step, but the first thing we did was put a roof on the building because it was an abandoned building. And then over the years, we had to correct a number of things until we realized the whole building had to be brought up to code and adhere to all the current standards that we were so lacking because of the condition we got the building in. As a board president, you can imagine it was very daunting because you start off these projects by saying, well, let's just try to do some basic maintenance and keep things going. Then, as I said, you reach a point where you realize you have to completely start over. And that's what we had to do, including replacing the foundation, one of the walls, which were all not part of the original plan. And yet, our Board of Directors was able to keep the project going, not stop, discontinue our services. We made arrangements to shift performances and groups from different spaces that we could provide them with, and the show always went on. We're now at the point, after doing all this work, we have a building, and we're suddenly encumbered in ways that we didn't expect before. It's very hard when you celebrate the completion or the near completion of this kind of a project and then have to go back to all our supporters and say, but we still owe $3 million unexpectedly. And that's why we're here, and that's why it's so important that we express our support for Intro 982. I'm hoping that future reforms to the city's procurement process will make it easier for us to function without having to cancel or postpone shows or groups. Because as I said, we have people coming from all over to work with us. And nothing's worse than not having the money or not having a card or a visa for them to come to visit us. So we don't want to disappoint people. And we've done a pretty good job of keeping the shows going, but now we need this funding to help us further. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I just had one question. Would access, as you heard from the testimony from the administration, would your, having access to a centralized document vault to store a required procurement form reduce time for you spent on the contracting opportunities? So imagine if you had one place that you just had to upload documents for all the agencies and you never had to do it again.
All of the, all of the portals that we have to go to for discretionary money, for capital funds, I mean, it's just crazy, right? So yes, I think that having a central portal would, would be extremely helpful and beneficial. And it would be great, you know, in, in terms of that portal, if we could get updates on where we were in the process to kind of understand what's happening, you know? There's so much in the dark all the time, and, and, and then, you know, they, you, you submit the requisition, they have a question. You answer the question. Then they give, they throw it back to you again. There's another question. You answer that question. You put it back in. They have another question. I'm like, just ask us the questions, and we'll do it in one shot, you know? But it's just, it's torture.
Have you found the current status tracker on Passport currently helpful at all for you to understand where you are in this process?
I, I haven't found that. I'm not, I don't use, to be honest, I don't use Passport religiously or on a regular basis. I mean, obviously, I'm familiar with Passport, but, you know, with all of these sites, it's, you know, you gotta have a different login for every site. I mean, it's just, I'm like, I can't deal with it.
It's not easy. Okay. Thank you so much.
Just as a person.
Yeah. Thank you so much for taking the time to come testify. We really appreciate it. We'll keep you updated.
We appreciate all the hard work you're doing.
We'll now move to virtual testimony. As a reminder for panelists who are testifying remotely, please wait until your name has been called, and then a member of our staff will unmute you, and please wait for the sergeant at arms to give you the go-ahead to begin. First, we will hear from Gloria Kim, followed by Michelle Cruz. Gloria Kim, you may begin when the sergeants announce the time.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon Chair Wong and members of the New York City Council Committee on Contracts. My name is Gloria Kim, and I'm the Director of Policy Research and Impact at the Human Services Council, a membership organization representing over 170 human services providers in New York City. The government has transferred most legally mandated human services for New Yorkers to the nonprofit sector to save on costs. And as the sector is stretched to meet community needs, providers are met with chronic delays in payment, underfunding, and a lack of sincere collaboration to create meaningful and lasting interventions which strips away limited resources. HSC supports interest to be paid on late payments under city contracts with nonprofit organizations. So we really thank the city council for their commitment to procurement reform and understanding the chronically delayed procurement process that providers face. For too long, nonprofits have incurred substantial costs for service delivery before they have a legal right to be paid and are often forced to borrow to make payroll. Interest payments on such borrowings are not reimbursable, except in rare cases, and must therefore be paid from reserves already stretched through the breaking point. It's imperative that any interest payment required by the contract agency is not taken out of program budgets. Although the current legislation is written to state the contracting agency must notify the council in writing as to why interest payments cannot be funded other than through program budgets, human services organizations are already facing severe underfunding while being asked to provide high-quality programs. The sector can't be asked to perform at the slaying level while providing increased services if these interest payments come out of program budgets. There also needs to be an incentive for government to pay on time, and if there's not an economic impact, except to the community, that this may not be achieved. And as nonprofits struggle to borrow to make rent and salaries, this impacts the resources they can put into additional programming, strategic planning, and compensating the workforce. HSC supports the establishment of a document vault to store certain procurement-related documents. This is an important step in ensuring that Passport becomes a one-stop shop for all procurement-related needs so that providers don't have to use multiple procurement systems. And as HHS Accelerator is decommissioned and Passport is developed to take over all procurement functions, HSC looks forward to the implementation of Document Vault for more streamlined procurement process and better user experience. And although the joint task force to get nonprofits paid on time took on a great effort in creating substantial reforms to address the procurement challenges that nonprofits face, there are still compounding delays in the contracting process that force providers to undertake costly borrowing to make payroll and rents, often accruing interest not covered by government contracts. Over the years, the sector has also seen real progress in contracting, only for it to unravel in future years. So current data of timeliness doesn't, doesn't mean that it will span future years or administrations. Progress now does not speak to permanent solutions, and that is what the sector needs, permanent contracting solutions. City agencies aren't getting a deal by chronically underfunding human services contracts to balance the budget. It's further harming, harming the low-wage workers the city relies on to keep these programs running while pushing community-related nonprofits into failure during a time of increased need. Thank you.
Thank you Gloria Kim. Next, we'll hear from Michelle Cruz. And as a reminder to anybody who still wishes to testify, if you are here in person, please fill out a witness slip and hand it to the sergeant at arms. And if you are here remotely, please raise your hand in the Zoom. Michelle Cruz, you may begin when the sergeants call the time.
Time starts now.
Hi, good afternoon Chair Wong and Council Committee members. My name is Michelle Cruz. I am the Director of Economic Development for Union Settlement, and I'm giving testimony on behalf of our CEO, Dr. Darlene Williams. Dear members of the New York City Council Committee on Contracts, I am ready to express my strong support for a proposed Intro 982 that will require interest payments to be made on late payments under city contracts with nonprofit contractors in New York City. This legislation is a critical step in addressing an issue that has long plagued the nonprofit sector and the communities it serves. I believe that this legislation is not only fair, but also necessary to ensure the continued success and sustainability of our vital nonprofit organizations. As Chief Executive Officer of Union Settlement, I have witnessed firsthand the challenges nonprofit organizations face when city contracts are not fulfilled promptly. Nonprofit organizations play a crucial role in addressing the needs of our communities, from providing essential social services to supporting education, healthcare, and more. Union Settlement and our fellow nonprofits rely on the timely disbursement of funds to carry out their missions effectively. The proposed legislation will bring several significant benefits to the nonprofit sector. One, financial stability. Nonprofit organizations often operate on tight budgets. Late payments can strain our finances, making it difficult to meet our ongoing obligations and provide essential services. Interest payments can help alleviate this financial burden. Two, operational efficiency. Timely payments are essential for nonprofits to plan and manage their programs efficiently. Late payments disrupt operations, hindering their ability to provide the critical services our communities depend on. Three, accountability. Requiring interest payments for late disbursements creates a level of accountability for the city's contractual obligations. It incentivizes the city to prioritize and expedite payments, promoting trust and collaboration between government and nonprofit organizations. Four, economic viability. Many nonprofit organizations rely on grants and contracts as their primary source of funding. Timely payments ensure our economic viability, allowing us to attract and retain skilled staff and plan for long-term sustainability. Lastly, enhanced service delivery. When nonprofits receive timely payments, we can focus on delivering high-quality services and expanding our reach. This benefits the city as a whole by addressing critical social and community needs. In conclusion, I firmly believe that this legislation is a vital step towards supporting nonprofit organizations in our mission to improve the lives of New Yorkers. By mandating interest payments on late disbursements, we can ensure that organizations like Union Settlement have the financial stability and confidence we need to continue our valuable work. I urge you and your fellow council members to support this legislation as it is in the best interest of both nonprofits and the communities we serve. Thank you for considering my testimony, and I am ready to support this important legislation in any way possible and look forward to seeing it enacted for the benefit of our cities, for our city's nonprofit sector. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Michelle. And this concludes our hearing for today for the Committee of Contracts. Thank you so much, everyone, for being here. Have a good day.